All right, Stephen. Next item then?
Approval of minutes. Approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting. Executive session, September 11th, 2017. Litigation and regular P-12 meeting, September 11th, 2017. Make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
I'll move.
Support. Any changes, corrections, additions, deletions, or can I attach a unanimous affirmative to these? I don't see anyone dissenting, so they're unanimously accepted. Thank you. Next item then.
Special reports. School Improvement Process. Ms. Fatimi Faraj, Dr. Glenn Maleko.
All right, so I'm just going to start us out and then I'm going to go back in my seat behind, at the board table. Just wanted to mention with the school improvement process, you know, this is a team process that involves multiple individuals in our faculty. Parents have been involved. I know board trustees have actually been on some of the school improvement visits. It's something we're, you know, very proud of. It's something that helps to drive instruction. There's a lot of data that's been provided to the board. I can tell you Ms. Faraj has done an outstanding job since she's come on as school improvement director. And it's also not only her, it's the administrators working with the teachers, with the team, and it's really aligns with our strategic plan and the professional learning community model. And so she's going to come up and she's going to have a couple of individuals that will help to give the presentation. But there are some changes coming. And what I want to mention is that we're looking at, we used to do one unannounced and one announced visit. We're looking at now two unannounced visits, and she's going to get into more detail. But they're kind of very authentic. And I think that what's happened too is actually the idea initially came from a lot of the teachers saying, no, you know, this is, this is some of the feedback we were hearing a couple of years ago. And, you know, it's a positive because we really go into the class, we're looking to provide support. And it's just one data set where we go in and we monitor all the instruction. And again, she's going to get into more detail. I want to mention too that we had a publication, as I sent to the board, that was accepted in the District Administration magazine, which then was picked up by ASCD, one of the big Association of Supervision and Curriculum Development that went all over the U.S. We then got invited to present at the State Advanced Ed Conference. So it's a real positive that they're looking at what we're doing in our model as a way to further collaborate and work together, going in a line with the professional learning community model that you heard presented here in August with Principal Casebolt. Again, this is all part of our strategic plan, and I know Ms. Faraj is going to mention it. And then I'm going to have her come up right now because we do have a meeting, the five year advanced ed review. And I'm going to really turn it over to her and I'll let her kind of mention what that is. But it is coming up and it's on the agenda for approval in February. And it's a five-year review process. And again, advanced ed is really looking us, looking at us as a state and I think, you know, a national leader. So Ms. Faraj, and she's got some others with her.
Thank you, Dr. Maleko. We know that school improvement is the single most important business any school can do. And it is the process that the school takes to make sure that every student is achieving. And that's really, we mean every single student regardless of what their level is. Dr. Maleko mentioned the advanced ed review engagement, the engagement review that's going to take place in February. And that's a four-day process that advanced ed runs to re-accredit districts. What they do is they visit the district. For our district, it's going to be about a team of 13, half out of state and half from within the state. And what they do is they visit the district, talk to all stakeholders, and examine our standards, how our students are achieving, talking to the board, talking to students, talking to the community members, parents, and central office staff. So we're putting all these artifacts together to present what we've been working on and also putting schedules together. And we'll let you know how the board involvement will be. One of the things they do is they give an exit report the last day. And they do not give us accreditation in the exit report, but they give us a development stage for our district. And then they send the report officially after they leave the district. We'll get more information on that. And I believe a couple months ago, I sent a memo regarding the details of the external review. I'd like to recognize that Dr. Maleko, the executive directors, all the principals and central office staff for making this process successful and working as a team. We all work closely to actually refine this process and making it authentic and useful as much as possible in the classroom. So one of the, one of the new steps that we did this year is instead of visiting the buildings and letting the buildings know that we are visiting on that day, we decided to go with two unannounced visits. We used to do one announced, one unannounced last year. We moved it to two unannounced. We received positive feedback from teachers and principals. It made it more authentic and realistic when 13 or 15 people walk into a building and examine classroom evidence. So that was a step that we have taken this year. In order to look at the data that the building is using, we also established a new process for the principals and assistant principals to come to central office and present what's called comprehensive needs assessment or data presentation. And this is what they're going to be doing within the next few weeks. These are the links for the publication, publications of the article we've published. As you can see, the school improvement aligns with the strategic plan and it's under more than one focus areas of the strategic plan. It is a living, breathing document that every school uses. Anything that, any goal or focus area in the strategic plan is, relies on the school improvement process and the steps that we take through the school improvement process. The process also has components that are used to, to measure the success of the strategic plan and the steps we're taking. Specifically curriculum assessment and instruction, communication and relationships have heavy focus on the strategic plan. So the purpose of this process again is, we all know and we've spoken about this several times in different presentations, that we cannot rely on one single metric to measure our school's success or district's success or student improvement or achievement. We know that we use standardized assessments, we use growth measures, and we've presented NWEA before to the board. But this is one of the very useful measures that we use. It is a growth model because it is learner-centric. It focuses on how the learner is applying the strategies that are in the strategic plan and school improvement. And when the visitors walk in the classrooms, they look for evidence. So we look for frequency and application of the strategies that we're teaching and we're including in our strategic plan. And again, measuring the implementation of, is one type of data. We look at student achievement demographic, and we also look at process data. Process data is collecting evidence to ensure that we're implementing what it is we're saying that we're implementing. So there is no way for us to figure out and compare semester to semester or year to year without having evidence. And we are learning this process. It's not easy, believe me. When we came up with the tool and we walked into the classrooms, we, we tend to give general comments about what we see. But with this refined process, we've been able to speak the same language and have enhanced conversations on student learning and what does it look like in the classroom or what does it sound like when we see students learning. And if you look at the rubric that I have included in the folder, this is the 17, 18 rubric that's revised. If you notice, the indicators are mostly students, students. It's starting with students and we're looking at what the students are doing. It is not meant in any way to be an evaluative tool. It is meant to be a growth tool, a growth for the school, for the district, for the students. And what we're focusing on is the learner. As we have mentioned, we, last year when we presented, we went over the progression of the process. This has started in 2006, and it took many different shapes and forms. We've used several forums and several guidelines. And this, last year, we created a rubric. And the rubric consisted of done strategies. And these were research-based and high-impact strategies that would go with any school improvement plan that you would see. I have listed the school improvement strategies. We kept them the same this year. Last year, we looked at fall to spring data, we compared, and we figured out the focus areas for the district and for the, for the district, the feeders and the school. They continue to be the same strategies this year because we need, we need to compare our practices and the implementation of our practices. The growth tool that we are using now, and we're going to start using actually tomorrow, the first day of the school improvement plan visits, they are research-based, as I said. They are based on several scholarly articles on school improvement. They're based also on different models. They're based on the model that you were using for teacher evaluation because of course that model, which is that Annalson's, looks at best practices for student achievement. It is also based on another model that's called Marzano's. And the Elliot is a tool that advanced ed uses when they come to visit our district. So we combined several different models and research articles to make sure that we have the best quality rubric or tool. And we've been, after we published the article, we've been getting a lot of requests to share To refine the rubric, it was not one single person task. There was a lot of reading, a lot of research, looking at the three different models I mentioned, but also the principals, the executive directors, Dr. Maleko. And we have formed a district-wide school improvement committee that consisted of administrators, teachers, parents, and non-classroom teachers. And we have met several times to look at the indicators that we have for us to be using when we visit classrooms. And we've refined it several times within the last three months as well. So this has taken several months of work. And we were collecting feedback last year. Every time we visited a school, we've collected feedback on what do they wish to see when we refine the rubric. And it is a live document that we will continue to collect feedback and enhance it in the One of the, one of the areas on the rubric I wanted to mention, and this is the first time we, we look at in the school improvement process, is using digital tools. This is one of the items on the Elliot rubric that advanced ed uses. And this is one of the areas, or they call it learning environment, we call it a strategy. And this is one of the areas that receive the lowest rank nationwide. Because when students are using technology, it doesn't mean just taking an iPad or a Chromebook or a calculator or the Promethean board and using it just a tool to reflect a worksheet. We wanted students to be engaged and collaborate when you're using, they're using the technology, doing research, and working with multiple pieces of data in front of them while using that digital tool. One of the other factors we look at with digital tool is our students collaborating when they're using the digital tool. So we look for student collaboration. I'd like to invite Ms. Lamis and Ms. Mary Tem from us to hear about school perspective.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for having us. We're proud to support Ms. Faraj in this process and share our perspective and answer any questions you may have. A few things while she was talking was, Mary and I actually have been partners on SIP since 2006, since its inception, and it has changed a lot dramatically. A lot less time in some areas and more time in others spent, but it's refined along the way. And it's much more focused. And like Fatimi said, it's a living document that we're able to use and help us focus our objectives at the building. Also, if you look at the rubric, it's something that last year, when Dr. Maleko and Ms. Faraj would come visit our buildings, would ask us for our feedback. And it's evident that our feedback is in the document. And as an administrator, I appreciate that. And also the expectations and best practices that are in there, and I'm speaking as far as Gear Park is concerned, it's aligned with our belief system on how student achievement can be increased. And the positive feedback that we receive when the visitors come to the building is something we look forward to, as well as it's a data point for us at the building along with other data points when they come in and we're told what's evident and what's not and to what degree. It's valuable data that we use along with our, my walkthroughs and the leadership's walkthroughs. So Ms. Tem is going to add to that, and then we can answer any questions you might have.
So every educator, all we want is continuous improvement. And that's what this process allows us to do. It forces us to analyze data, look for research-based strategies. We look for job embedded PD. And as the instructional coach, that's very important to me. So we're always looking for ways to improve our entire process. The rubric really lends itself to our PLCs. We focus on things like the objectives, the questioning techniques, and the feedback, the formative of feedback which drives our instruction. And then we come back with more data, analysis, analyze it, and then move on. So if the strategies aren't working, that data gives us that information and we know to adapt it. So the whole process is very beneficial from a teaching standpoint, so we can drive our instruction and progress our kids and prove our student achievement.
So, excuse me. Am I?
No, please.
So is the growth estimated or evaluated on the basis of each student? Or is this a growth issue for the classroom? I'm, I'm lost.
The data? The, as far as the growth data?
Well, the whole point here is, is to show growth in learning.
Sure.
Is it growth in learning for the individual student or is it for the classroom? Or how do you determine?
How do we disaggregate the data in, okay, so many different ways. This year with the way the, the state is disaggregating data, it's not only proficiency, but it's also growth.
Yes.
Having that additional growth perspective forces us even more to look at individual students and not just those that are almost at proficiency or not, but every student should be making growth. And this has been a Dearborn model for as long as I've been a part of it. The data points include NWEA, Amstop, building data like running records, DRA, and, and WIDA. And so it goes from the building to grade level to classroom to student. And then also, in another way, you look at it from a subgroup point of view, from your ED, your special ed, your ELs. So it's a lot of data to analyze. And so from all that data, we have to find what our strengths are, our challenges, our trends, our summary data, and then what our plan is. So it's really, it's a lot. It really, it really, it's a lot of information, but it's good information and it's driving us to differentiate and to individualize.
All right. Just go through what you do when you walk into a classroom.
As an administrator?
For this process.
Okay.
You're trying to show growth in the classroom.
Sure.
How do you do that? What do you do when you go into the classroom?
Okay. So how it used to be and how it is, and if, if I may go back to how it was and how it is now, as a visitor and all administrators and support teams are invited to visit other buildings.
Okay.
With a rubric in hand, and we, we visit classrooms for 10 to 20 minutes a classroom.
All right.
The way it used to be was more, for lack of a better term, walking the walls and looking at documentation. That process could have been improved, and it has been. And now what we're looking for is an overall feel of the school, of the classroom, student engagement, questioning techniques, instruction, the choices a teacher is making, the choices students are being allowed to, to make. So you're looking at an overall picture of the classroom. And to do that, you really have to understand the rubric and the components of it, which we've been trained in, in understanding.
Do the teachers understand?
Yes. This all has to be shared. So our school SIP has to be a building-wide initiative. The teachers look at the data collectively.
Okay.
And put together goals, agree on strategies, because every strategy, every goal has to be building-wide, it has to be a commitment. And so if the teachers aren't part of it, they're not going to be committed. So it has to be agreed on, agreed upon strategies that all will use and will be evident in the classrooms.
So if you go into the classroom.
Yes.
The teacher already knows generally what's going on at the, at the school. And what are the strengths and weaknesses? Do they make presentations to you as a team going into the classroom?
No, they're just observing. I've been on a regular, regular day. Process. It's just a regular day and you're an observer in the back of the room.
Okay. So you're observing based on the?
We try to make it, keep it as authentic as possible, which is why they're unannounced as well, so.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustee Petchikoff.
This is probably not an answer any of you are going to be able to answer, and I don't think Dr. Patterson is here, but maybe anecdotally you can help me with this. I've heard from several elementary staff, not from Gear Park, or from, I'm not going to mention the school. That being said, they were very frustrated with how the NWEA testing software program operates. They've had a lot of glitches, a lot of problems, a lot of setbacks. Students start the testing process and, and the program circumvents the student's progress on its own. And they find it not very helpful at that point. Now, when I asked them, is the information you're gathering helpful and it's just the way the software program works, or are you unhappy with the whole process? And they said, from my understanding, was, was that it was more of a software issue of how, of how it operated and serviced the student. Is that something that we need to, I mean, I don't know if it's a case-by-case building classroom issue with the software programs, or is it systemic with what we are purchasing? Because quite frankly, if everybody is struggling with getting their students to get through these tests, and we already hear enough complaints about how long testing takes out of the time in the classroom, is this something that we need to look at a little more closely?
This is, this is anticipated with any portal that you use for testing. It is not, it's not specifically a soft, it's not specifically a software. There is a portal for Amstop, for example, and students take it online. There are glitches, there are people who, techs that can help right away and they provide the number. We have minimal issues with Amstop. We had several issues because of the traffic during the testing time on the portal. That does happen, and it's not necessarily the, the digital tools that we have. It is the.
Well, this is an Amstop, this is NWEA.
NWEA, that's what I'm saying. Amstop, we didn't have any issues.
Right.
But with NWE, we did. And what it does is freezes the student.
Right.
And then they would go back and continue testing once the teacher refreshes and the teacher helps the student. We do understand that this is something that happens with online testing. Anytime the students are testing online using a digital tool, these things happen. And we've had a better year, year this year than we did in the past while the students were testing in terms of glitches. And these are documented incidents that Troy Patterson and Dan Patterson look into during testing time and after testing time. And NWE is contacted regarding these incidents on a regular basis.
But how, how widespread is this? Because if we get teachers who are frustrated with using.
Yeah.
A certain program that we're using to establish criteria and, and as a, as a tool to monitor growth.
Agree.
You know, then, then we've got a problem.
Absolutely. And this should be looked at very.
We can get an update.
Yeah.
We'll get an update. I mean, I did hear, but I didn't hear it widespread, but I'll get an update.
And I don't know how widespread it is. I've just been hearing this of late.
So this year, NWE had an issue. So it was out of Dearborn's control. And as soon as Mr. Patterson found out about it, he alerted the teachers, I think it was about 48 hours for them to, to work on their system. So I don't think we'd had that issue that widespread before, but it was actually an NWEA issue across the U.S. that they had a testing issue.
If I can just add, so also on, in, to their benefit, NWE, they also accommodated certain things this year that weren't accommodated last year. A couple examples are if they, if the computer notices that a student is rushing through problems, it will itself pause their assessment. So this is to benefit the student so we can get a more authentic assessment. But when it's paused, teachers may not have known how to navigate as a result of that. So it's, I would say it's growing pains, but the, the intention was, was good and it's to benefit the students. Were we prepared or was every teacher prepared on how to handle that? Maybe that's where there needs to be clarification.
I was, it's probably a combination.
Sure.
Of things depending on whose classroom it was being affected.
And the age of the students too.
Right. And, and these were all elementary students.
Yes.
That I was hearing from.
Yeah.
So I guess what we just need to do is be mindful.
Sure.
When we're, when we purchase these kinds of products and how well, and how much we rely upon them, I guess is what I'm, I'm trying to get at, is, is I don't want to make it the, you know, the golden ticket there for our getting ourselves.
Sure.
The perfect answer for how we.
And it's one of multiple data points.
Right.
Every building uses because of these reasons. When we do any assessments on any given day, we have to consider the time the student is taking the assessment, if they're feeling well or not. There are so many subjective variables that go into play.
That impact.
So NWEA is just one point that we use, which is why SIP is powerful, because it really forces us to reflect and analyze all of our data points into one to figure out what our trends are, and then we take out the outliers.
So I guess what we really need to do is communicate with our staff that, you know what, this isn't the perfect system, but it's, it's what we, it's what we have found to be most beneficial, and you're just going to have to kind of have the patience to work through. But we just maybe need to give them a pep talk and remind them.
Trustee Hamud, you had a question?
Hey, I had a couple of questions.
Okay, go ahead.
First of all, congratulations on being published. I had the opportunity to go to one of the SIP visits. And Dr. Med, you asked good questions because when I, before I went to the visits, I really didn't know what the rubric was. I didn't know what these visits were all about. And the way that I saw it is, and it's important to say that it's not an evaluation tool. When you're going into these classrooms, you're not going in there to evaluate the teachers. And I know some teachers, when the walks were going on, they had their hand on their heart like, what did they think of my classroom? And that's not what these visits are for, or individual students. But it's basically school as a whole. And that's how the data is compiled. And this is when it's kind of an umbrella and then it breaks down to, when the principal evaluates the data for the school as a whole, how can they take that data and make sure that they, along with their staff, work on those improvements? Now, I know that you had stated that the rubric has changed some, and I know that it will probably continue to be a change in progress to make sure that all the points and the needs are being met and so on. But does that affect data in any way? In terms of if the rubric is changing, are we still being consistent with the data that we're collecting?
The changes that have taken place this year is more of refining the rubric. As I have mentioned, we have kept the same strategies, but we have included clarifying, clarifying statements so that the visitor or the observer would really understand how to look and what they need to be listening for. For example, also, I've taken the model after advanced ed. They changed the rubric completely for this year. It's called the Elliot rubric. And what they did is they kept the same strategies so that you can compare growth from year to year. And I wanted to thank Ms. Hilda Iraani, she's in the back, she's working in my department this year. She's the instructional coach for school improvement. And before we put our final touches on this one, Hilda and I spent one and a half day of training watching classroom clips and scoring those clips based on the Elliot rubric so that we are ready for their visit and also for our rubric to present it to the principals. So again, we have more indicators under each of the strategies. And also to add on Lamis's answer, Ms. Surr's answer in terms of growth, this process does not only include the, the tool, it includes a comprehensive needs assessment, which is a school data profile.
includes a comprehensive needs assessment, which is a school data profile that every school goes through with the entire staff. And that profile has all the measures that we see in schools, NWEA, Amstop, assessments that the buildings do in the building, or like the writing rubric that they use. Any assessment that they do, they put it in front of the staff, and they analyze it, looking at the EL students, the special ed, the economically disadvantaged, and how big the gap is, and what do they need to narrow the gap. So, that's the comprehensive needs assessment that is part of this process. Now, this growth tool is called process data. The others are the achievements and the demographic data. They also look at mobility as part of the demographic data, to see how many students are entering and how many are leaving. That affects student achievement in that building, even if they're leaving to a different building in the district. Practices change, and that would affect the scores. So, again, the way we measure is through these specific indicators that we've added this year under the strategies. If you look at the next few slides, it shows you the growth. Like, last year, we visited over 700 classrooms, and that's including art, music, gym. Any type of classroom that exists in the building is visited during the visit. And what we do is-
Thank you.
Thank you. So, what we do is, we look at fall to spring, and we look at the areas that we dropped in. For example, we dropped with student engagement or questioning techniques, and we need to find out what the reason is. Then, we broke it by feeder track, to see what the feeder track schools needed to focus on. The strategies that Dearborn High feeder needed to focus on are not necessarily the same strategies that Fortson needed to focus on. So, we disaggregated by feeder. And we also had comparison for each single school fall to spring. And this information was shared with the principals, so that they can share with their staff. And these graphs represent each of the strategies on the rubric, and fall to spring, either improvement or drop in these strategies. And moving from announced to unannounced, we did see a drop last year, because definitely it's more authentic when you go to a classroom, and the staff is not expecting you. One of the areas, for example, is content and language objectives, and what the students are learning for that day or for that specific hour. That is expected to be posted and communicated to the students. So, this is one strategy with several indicators. If the strategy, if the objective is posted, is it communicated? If we have three questions on the rubric that we ask the students, we interview students, and we say, do you know what you're learning about? Do you know what to do when you're stuck? So, do the students know what to refer to or where to go when they're stuck? So, these are indicators we look for. Any questions?
No, I guess that's it. They peppered you throughout with questions. So, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight, to the other gentle ladies as well. Thank you. Okay.
Can I mention?
Yes, Dr.-
And if any trustee-
I'm sorry, I didn't even notice you were to my right there.
Again, it's a real positive. And I've been part of this since 2006, when I was a principal at Salina. And it has evolved. It's a great, multiple measures. You heard Ms. Sura mention, it's a multiple measure. It's one of the data sets we're using of multiple, including growth and other things. And so, if any trustee would like to, now it's unannounced, we don't have it where they're going, but if any trustee would like to, you know, go on a visit, you know, let me know. And, you know, some of you have gone last year, that we can arrange something that meets, you know, the needs of your schedule, because they're happening, starting this week, all the time now. So, we're gonna be very busy in the schools. So, thank you to the team again for presenting.
Dr. Mead.
Does this, is this approach used in many different school districts?
I think, from what I know, it's a unique approach. Now, they do have district-wide accreditation, but the way that we're implementing it fully, I know when it was first brought in, it was something that was done sparingly across the nation. And now, I think that's why Advanced Ed wants us to really present on it, because we have been a leader in this area. And you wouldn't necessarily see this, even in other districts in the county. The county superintendent has actually asked me, asked me, myself and Ms. Faraj, to go and present in front of the superintendents on this model as well.
So, Mr. Wiston knows all about this.
Yes. Oh, yes. He's well-versed in it.
All right.
Okay. Later.
Action items. Special consideration of an action item. Are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below. I think 12 and 13 need a roll call.
At least 12. Number 13 is a special session. It's not closed.
I wasn't really certain on that one.
So, I know 12 does, and I would like to have nine polled and have a roll call, vote on nine as well.
Nine. Well, so, do we wanna do nine and 12?
Nine and 12. Does anyone have any others? I know that 12 requires.
Requires.
But 13, we may as well have a roll call. I don't think it requires, so, we may as well.
You want me to poll it then?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Move that action items numbered 1 through 15 be approved with the exceptions of 9, 12, and 13, as recommended in this agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Okay. So, that being said, is there any dissent from the motion on the floor, or is this a unanimous motion? It looks like it is. I see no dissent. So, we'll attach unanimous affirmative vote on that.
All right. Ready for the summary?
And then read the summary. Thank you.
Summary. Approval of warrants is number one. Number two, approval of award to Velasis Sales and Marketing Incorporated. Number three, approval of award of contracts per board report 1735. 4 through 7, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P12. 8, approval of 2017, 2018 superintendent goals. 10, approval of policy per board report 1740. 11, approval of a financial statement. 14, approval of donations. And 15, approval of an award to Agnewity Incorporated.
15 was added just this evening, so that's why it's not on the summary there. It's a supplement.
Yes, thank you.
So, now, we'll return to number nine.
Nine. Foya fee appeal. Recommended action. Move that the board deny Mr. Adal Mosip's appeal to waive fees associated with the request as officially received September 11th, 2017.
So moved.
Support. Okay. So, does anyone have any questions before we have, yes, trustee Barry?
Dr. Maleko Arnold. David's still in the room.
I think he's behind us over there.
There he is. Okay. From what I understand, at the last board meeting, we acknowledged receiving the appeal so far. Okay?
That is correct.
Then, I've been hearing, and I've read through board notes, that we have 10 business days to respond.
After tonight's board meeting.
After tonight's board meeting.
That's correct.
So, after tonight's board meeting is, tonight kicks off the 10 days.
The 10 days. That's correct.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
And we're voting on the fact that Mr. Mosip's claim under federal law does not apply to stay local FOIA information?
The fee schedule.
The fee schedule. I'm sorry. Thank you.
I believe what you are voting on is that you are denying the appeal to waive fees is what you are voting.
And our lawyer clarified that what Mr. Mosip is claiming under federal law does not apply.
It's my understanding.
That's what I, that's what I-
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure that, you know, before we go down, I'm voting on.
Okay. Any other questions? Ready for a roll call?
Roll call.
Okay.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Hamud?
Yes.
Trustee Nassar?
Yes.
Trustee Mead?
Yes.
Trustee Petlicoff, yes. Trustee Thor?
Yes.
President Lane?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Number 12.
Number 12. Calling for a P12 executive session closed. Move that an executive session be held on Monday, November 13th, 2017, at 6:00 PM in the superintendent's conference room at the Administrative Service Center. The purpose of the meeting, which is a closed meeting, is to discuss negotiations per Section 8C of the Michigan Opens Meeting Act.
So moved.
Support.
Ready for a roll call?
This requires a roll call, so let's do it.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Hamud?
Yes.
Trustee Nassar?
Yes.
Trustee Mead?
Yes.
Trustee Petlicoff, yes. Trustee Thor?
Yes.
President Lane?
Yes. Motion carries again. All right.
All right. I'm gonna follow that.
It's all done.